All right, we've had our little break from Christmas and New Year. So hopefully you didn't forget too much. John was caught up in heaven. He saw the throne. He saw the beast that were around it. He saw the elders. We talked about that, probably elders from the church because they had a crown. Angels don't have crowns. Crowns are given to those that Bible talks about the church people acquiring crowns. So it's probably talking about the elders there. You have these beasts around the throne. You have the Holy Spirit's presence. And now, now we're gonna have the presentation of seals. Now, there is no mention from here on out, from chapter six all the way to chapter eighteen. The church is not mentioned. So in these first six chapters, one through five, we've had the church mentioned, or it's mentioned of elders. It's mentioned of what's going on in the church. But once we hit chapter six through chapter eighteen, through these judgments, the church is not mentioned. Now, to me, that's important for those of us that believe in a pre-tribulation rapture, that the church isn't present when that time clock that Daniel talks about gets kickstarted again. And we'll, we'll cover, we'll cover that here in just a minute. We'll, we'll jump back to Daniel and, and talk about those, um, those, that last week, if you will, of Daniel. But, um, chapter six to eighteen, the church isn't mentioned. However, uh, in chapter seven, verse fourteen, great tribulation is mentioned. In, and in chapter six, verse seventeen, the great day of wrath is mentioned. So where we get our term tribulation, or time of testing, time of terribleness, whatever you wanna call it, John clearly alludes to it in chapter six and chapter seven. It's called under different names, okay? Uh, Daniel, chapter nine, uh, verse twenty-seven. Let's jump back there real quick and bring a little context to you. I should've had a bookmarker in it, right? Some of you are on your phones and it's, you're already there because you're cheating. Not cheating. If you're not cheating, you're not trying. All right, I'm gonna start in, uh, verse twenty-four, and I just wanna read, read this to you, all right? In Daniel, chapter nine, seventy weeks are decreed about your people. So this, this prophecy given to Daniel is about the captivity that Israel is under. Okay? God is revealing to Daniel, he's giving him hope, letting him see the timeline of the Messiah truly ruling over and through Israel, okay? Seventy weeks are decreed about your people and your holy city to finish the transgression. Isn't that kinda weird? To finish the transgression? Wouldn't God wanna stop them from doing evil? God is patient. God gives us all the grace for the longest period of time for us to turn around. All right? A lot of people are like, well, why doesn't God just tell us what to do? Or why doesn't he make this person well? Well, how would you like it if God told you what you were gonna eat today? Day after day after day? Well, that'd be fine with me. No, it wouldn't. You'd get tired of it and you'd decide, I'm not gonna do it today. How do I know? Because we don't follow his rules now. Okay? So don't be saying it's God's fault because God could interfere. You wouldn't like it if God interfered all the time. God gave us free will, all right? So he lets for the transgression, um, to cut, to, uh, to put an end to sin and to atone for iniquity, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to seal both vision and profit, and to anoint a most holy place. Know therefore and understand that from the goings out of the word to restore the build, uh, to build Jerusalem to the coming of the anointed one, a prince, there shall be seven weeks. Okay? Seven weeks. We know by watching the, the calendar, a week is seven years. He's using it as far as, uh, almost like a time span of seven years. So he says it will be, how many weeks? Seven weeks? So seven times seven is forty-nine. You wonder why everyone didn't believe the shepherds when they went running through the street? The Messiah is born? How many people do you think tried to claim the Messiah was born, that they were the Messiah? How easy is it to run a Ponzi screen, scream, scheme? When you have the trusted prophet Isaiah saying that at forty-nine years, I mean, Daniel, excuse me, at forty-nine years, the anointed one is gonna show up? They probably heard it a lot. Hey, here comes, here, here, here comes the Messiah. I'm telling you, this guy's the Messiah. And he wasn't, okay? Then, for sixty-two weeks, it shall be built again with squares and moat, but in troubled times. Okay? That's getting to our, to our end times, right? And after the sixty-two weeks, an anointed one shall be cut off and shall have nothing. And the people out of the prince who is to come, out of the prince who is to come, we just talked about the anointed one. So the prince who is to come can't be the same person. Right? So the prince who is to come, we believe, is what Revelation refers to as Satan's messenger or the Antichrist, okay? The prince who is to come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary. He promises peace. He helps them rebuild the temple, and then he, he destroys it. Its end shall come with a flood, and to the end there shall be war. Desolations are decreed. Verse twenty-seven, and he shall make a strong covenant with many for one week and for a half a week. Three and a half years. Right? So be the half. And he shall put an end to sacrifice and offering. So at that time, he cuts it off. And on the wing of abomination shall come on one who makes desolate until the decreed end is poured out. So here he's, he, Daniel is forewarning of the hard times that are coming, how the temple will be restored and then it'll be cut off. But that's Daniel's hope. When that happens, he, uh, the righteous one takes his place and reigns forever. But Daniel knows the timeline of when the anointed one will appear. He knows that the anointed one then is cut off. Okay? And then he is reestablished later. This is where we're picking up with the seals being broken, because the church is no longer mentioned. We now are moving into God dealing with Israel at the timeline that he has already laid out in the book of Daniel. So Daniel seven, uh, seven years isn't stated, but a timeline of, of, uh, of the worst is put at forty-two months in chapter eleven, verse two, and thirteen, verse five. So forty-two months is how long? It's not seven years. Don't, don't make it is. Three and a half. Okay? So the worst is at forty-two months, as mentioned. That's three and a half years, okay? Jesus, uh, talked about end times. Remember, we talked about this, uh, when we started in Matthew, chapter twenty-four. Let's refresh ourselves on what Jesus said. Matthew, chapter twenty-four. They asked Jesus, how will we know what will it be like? Jesus left the temple. Twenty-four, verse one, away when, with his disciples to a point out of the building of the temple. But he answered them, you see all this, do you not? Truly, I say you, there will not be, there will not be here one stone upon another that will not be thrown down. As he sat down on the mount of Olives, the disciples came to him privately, saying, tell us, when will these things be? And what will be the sign of your coming and the end of the age? Verse four, and Jesus answered them, see that no one leads you astray. For many will come in my name. I am the Christ, and they will lead many astray. And you will hear of wars and rumors of wars. See that you are not alarmed, for this must take place, but the end is not yet. For nation will rise up against nation and kingdom against kingdom. And there will be family, famines and earthquakes in various places. And these are but the beginning, beginnings of the earth pains. We've seen wars and earthquakes for a long time, have we not? Okay? These are just the beginnings. What we're about to study is the unleashes, okay? But these are just the beginnings, Jesus tells them. Then they will deliver you up to tribulation and put you to death, and you will be hated by all the nations for my name's sake. What does that tell you, church, about what's still to come? Bad stuff for the church. It's gonna get much worse than it is now. A lot of churches are going, it can't get, it's gonna get worse. And then many will fall away and betray one another and hate one another. Those of you that hold the eternal security, I'm one of you. That is gonna make, you're gonna have to do some thinking about that. Many will fall away. What's he talking about? Is it, is the proof in the pudding? Were you really saved? Did you really mean it? He says many are gonna fall away. And many false prophets will arise and lead many astray. And because lawlessness will be increased, the love of many will grow cold. Is lawlessness increasing? Yeah. So after the game last night, we went and ate, and I was going home, and this dumb dumb was driving seventy miles an hour down Indian Road. I, I could tell he was pulling away, away from me. So he finally has to go, slow down to go through the curves at Levi Cuts. And I catch up to him, takes off again. I get behind him. I pace him at seventy miles an hour. I get close enough to where I can almost see his license plate. I turn my lights on. He slows down. I, I call in, hey, I'm trying to ten fifty-nine a guy. He doesn't pull over. He speeds up and keeps going. Is lawlessness increasing? Uh, a small SUV, it was dark, I couldn't tell. It wasn't a muscle car. But I'm just telling you, officers are behind him trying to pull him over. They don't care. Doesn't surprise me one bit. Guys, it, it, it's... Studying for, for this message, one of the commentators made the comment, for everyone who says that God is love, Revelation changes that narrative for them. God is love, but he is just, and he is gonna bring the wood. Okay? And for Christians sitting in the pew thinking, God is love, my sins aren't gonna get judged. I got news for you, it's coming. We will stand before him. Paul is clear. We will stand before him, give him an account of what we've done in this body. It won't be whether or not we're going to heaven or not. That was already determined at the cross and when we accepted Jesus our Savior. But we will give an account of the talents and the abilities and the gifts he's given us. And, and God is love. God is mercy, but he is just. Yeah, lawlessness. But to the one who endures to the end will be saved. And, and this gospel of the kingdom will be proclaimed throughout the whole world as a testimony to all nations. And then the end will come. How, uh, you know, when I was a kid, you need to be a missionary. You need to go to the deepest, darkest Africa, right? Take, take God's word to the pygmies or do whatever, right? But we need to send missionaries. Can we, now we don't even have church in person anymore, do we? We just send it over the internet. It, it'll reach the deepest, darkest, darkest parts. As we get into Revelation and what happens in those last three and a half years, when the prop, when the prophets and the witnesses show up and they are killed and they are left rotting in the street for three days. You wonder how the whole world will be watching them. How many people have a webcam just watching stuff that you can find online, right? There, you, uh, Google Ruger clock or something. Some guy had a, had a clock next to his Ruger sitting at the house, and it says, it's gone this long without killing anybody. It's just a running clock and his pistol sitting there, not doing anything, right? Just proving that guns don't kill people is what he's trying to do. You know, this gun doesn't do anything. So when you see abomination and desolation, okay, this is when the, this is when the, the Antichrist, uh, does his stuff, uh, talking later in, uh, Revelation, but Jesus is telling them this is gonna happen. Spoken by the prophet Daniel, standing in the holy plus, place, let the reader understand. Then let those who are in Jedea flee to the mountains. Let the one who was on the housetop not go down and take what is in the house. And let the one who was in the field not turn back and take his cloak. And alas, for a woman who are pregnant, and for those who are nursing infants in those days, pray that your flight may not be in winter or in the Sabbath. For then there will be a great tribulation such as has not been seen from the beginning of the world until now and never will be. And if those days had not been cut short, in other words, if God has not been merciful and had those last three and a half years timed, um, no human being would be saved. But for the sake of the elect, those days will be cut short. Then if anyone says to you, look, here is the Christ, or there he is, do not believe it. For false Christ and false prophets will arise and perform great signs and wonders, so as to lead astray, if possible, even the elect. See, I have told you beforehand, so if they say to you, look, he is in the wilderness, do not go out. If they say, look, he's in the inner rooms, do not believe it. For as, for as the lightning comes from the east and shines as far as the west, so will be the coming of the Son of Man. Wherever the corpse is, there the vultures will gather. Immediately after the tribulation of those days, the sun will be darkened. The moon will not give its light, and the stars will fall from heaven, and the powers of the heavens will be shaken. Then will appear in the heavens the sign of the Son of Man. And then all the tribes of the earth will mourn, and they will see the Son of Man coming in the clouds of heaven with power and great glory. And he will send out his angels with a loud trumpet call, and they will gather his elect from the four winds, from the ends of the heaven to the other. Jesus is painting what John is about to unravel for us in a little bit more detail. He just said, this is what it's gonna look like. So let's, let's get to Revelation, chapter six, and the first, um, the first revealing, if you will, of, of, of how the end times are gonna look, start showing up. And, and we start with John talking about horses, right? Who doesn't like horsies, right? So we have four horses, uh, revealed to us here at the first part of Revelation, chapter six, as part of the seals. So the first seal we see in, uh, chapter six, verses one and two. Now, I watched when the lamb opened one of the seven seals, and I heard one of the four living creatures say with a voice like thunder, come. And I looked, and behold, a white horse, and its rider had a bow, and the crown was given to him, and he came out conquering and to conquer. A white horse. Who rides on a white horse? The good guy, right? Unless it's Zorro, right? Zorro had a black horse. Right? You, you would think a white horse, right? So i- if I'm a guy that I really want people to think I'm a good guy, but I'm not, I'd probably wanna do everything a good guy would do, say, would think I'm a good guy. Right? That's the situation here. This white horse, it's a deception. This, this is not referring to Jesus. Jesus is, is in heaven with the church. We're getting ready. He's giving us the instructions on what it's gonna look like for the millennial reign, when we rule and reign with him. You know, we're going through our little, whatever you wanna call it, instructions on how to do that stuff for these seven years. This isn't Jesus. This clearly is the Antichrist. He will come in a deceptive form. Notice he has a bow. Could be. Man bun. Exactly. Maybe, maybe John saw the wrong thing and he, he just put bow, but he really meant, really bow. I don't know. It, it's, it's a warrior's bow. How many of you fear a guy with a bow? How many of you guys feel, fear a guy with a bow and arrow? Yeah, I fear no guy with a bow. That, that's a club. I, I'm just showing you the details of this passage. He has a bow, but he has no arrow. He has his crown. All right? Antichrist is gonna be propped up as the answer to all a man's problems. He's gonna have a crown. They're gonna say, you're our leader. You're our savior. Right? Dr. Fauci, right here. This, this is the, this is the prince that is to come, back in Daniel, chapter nine, verse twenty-six. When princes would go and conquer, they would come back with, with their captives in tow. They would be on a white horse. The rest of their army would be following him. But, but this is the deception part. He appears to be the prince, but he's not. He's truly the Antichrist, and that's why everyone falls for it. You know, the dangerous thing, when we look to ourselves or to the world to fix our problems, is that we become more gullible to being tricked and deceived. You know, i- if you really want something to be a good deal, right? You're gonna see it as a good deal, whether it is or isn't. Right? I'm terrible. I've, I've, I'm terrible. I've done okay with some used cars. You know, bought, traded for the Mustang, the rear end was bad in it. I traded for my next little thing, project car here, and took it to the mechanic, 'cause I wanted to make sure the steering field felt much funny to me. I'm thinking tie rods or something. No, the gearbox in the steering wheel is probably bad, some other things that he needs to look at and fix. Terrible. I drove it, I left it running, didn't see any leaks. There's some leaks here and there. He's gonna, he's gonna look at and fix more. It's like, ah. Why? 'Cause I really wanted to get that vehicle, right? I'd, I'd done my research, done my pricing. Uh, yeah, that's... When you want something, you're usually gonna find a way and you're, and you're gonna miss what's going on. There's many in our world that want this stuff fixed. And many people who claim Jesus is their savior, who will be led astray very easily because they want everything fixed. We have become a society that we will not endure any pain. We will not put up with any suffering. And then that's my point. You get a headache? Oh, where's my pill? Instead of letting the headache play out, unless it's a migraine or something, you know, it's something you can't... How, how many of us automatically go for the pain pills? Well, Pastor, is there anything wrong? I didn't say there's anything wrong with asthma. I'm just telling you, think about it. We don't wanna put up with any pain whatsoever. We have become reliant on our own technologies. And if we don't wanna put up with pain, we look to someone to take care of it for us. And the Antichrist will be that easy to slide in. Uh, the next seal, verses three and four. When he opened the second seal, I heard the second living creature say, come. And out came another horse, bright red. Its rider was, uh, permitted to take, uh, peace from the earth, and that people should, should slay one another. And he was given a great sword. Bow, no arrows, great sword. Who's the one really causing havoc? The one with the great sword. Who talks about peace, but he ends up pulling peace away. Right? So the red horse, clearly this is talking about war. Right? And this is the individual that will take political power. The power behind the throne, if you will. We haven't quite got there in Revelation, but the Antichrist will have his own prophetess. The, the, the person behind the curtain, the power behind the power. The way that Satan, if you will, shows himself on earth, you know, if you wanna say that, is through this prophetess, whispering in the Antichrist ear, here's what you need to do next. Here's what you need to do next. She's the one wielding the political power, this false prophet. That way, the Antichrist can still look like he's a person of peace, right? No, I'm not. Just because we could put our own names that we think would fit there, that doesn't mean that's what we're talking about. But the red horse has a large sword, and notice that, that they have the power to take peace in their hands, to turn people on one another. That, I still think this is Anthony Fauci, too. Turn people on one, against one another, right? I don't watch very much news anymore. I read articles, um, 'cause I can pick what I read and what I don't, but, you know, man, some of these newscasts about how they're dividing people, um, Rhode Island, if you have been, if you've taken the shots in the booster and you are positive with COVID, you can still work in a hospital. Even though it's transmittable, everyone that is, not everyone, most people who have been vaccinated are the ones in the hospital right now, by the way. Yes, they do. They just don't make it, they don't say it real loud. The, so they fired people who didn't get this therapeutic. It's not a vaccine. I like the term therapeutic. Who didn't take this therapeutic, like a flu shot, right? They fired them, won't let them work in healthcare. But even though they're carrying the virus and known to carry it, we're gonna put them back in the hospital. So they were, um, interviewing, I heard an interview today with a congressman who talked, talked about the facts. Again, he gets the facts. Congress actually gets numbers that don't get leaked out. He said, a lot of people that are in the hospital that have COVID went into the hospital without COVID and caught it while they were in the hospital. You don't hear that either, do you? All these hospitals are full of COVID patients. They didn't go in with COVID. They're not in the hospital because of COVID. But a lot of them are catching it while they're in the hospital. We are dividing everyone against each other, instead of realizing that we are all meeting this disease head-on in our own way. Instead, we're trying to blame, it's their fault. It's not my fault. I got the shot. It's not, it's their fault. We don't take the blame for our own sin and the own issues that have come from it. If I die of cancer, I deserved it. Whether I smoked a cigarette in my life or anything, I, because of my sin, I deserve to die. How God brings that judgment on me, that's up to God. Well, you can't say that, that's mean. It's not mean, it's God's word. Okay? Um, when we don't have the proper perspective on things is when we twist the views, right? This guy is gonna have, or this person on the red horse is gonna have the ability to turn people on each other, and they slay each other. Kinda like Kingsman, right? Where, where he hits that button on the phone and they all start jangling each other. All right, uh, the third seal, verses five and six. When he opened the third seal, I heard the third living creature say, come. And I looked, and behold, a black horse. Not to be funny, but going back to Kingsman, those of you that saw it, I'm not telling you to watch it, 'cause there's a lot of violence in there, but, you know, heads blowing up and everything like that. Why did he do that? Remember why the villain did that? Why he put out those phones and was killing everybody? Overpopulation was killing the earth. The humans are the virus. You had to kill damn the humans. I'm just telling you, later on, you hear in just a little bit, we're, we're gonna talk about that. But, uh, so anyway, she, she, last, again, the last writer, they turned each other upon each other, and they started killing each other. So the seals, verse three and four, uh, the black horse, I'm sorry, we're on the third one, verses, uh, five and six. When he opened the third seal, I heard the third living creature say, come. And I looked, and behold, a black horse, and its rider had a pair of scales in his hands. So it's not Zorro. And I heard what seemed to be a voice in the midst of the four living creatures saying, a quart of wheat for Denarius and three quarts of barley for Denarius. Denarius is one day's pay. Work eight hours, work twelve hours, whatever your shift is, that's one day's pay. And do not harm the oil or the wine. So basically, this black horse represents famine. You will have to work all day to have enough food for one day. And that doesn't count cooking oil to cook the bread with, or something to wash it down with, as far as something that's not water that you haven't found. Which, by the way, the water is all gonna be turned to blood, a lot of it, and it's gonna be infected by other stuff. We'll get to it later. But when this famine hits and there's no food, people are gonna turn on each other, aren't they? This black horse is famine. Famine usually follows devastation and war. Why does famine follow war? When did we have our Great Depression? After World War One. What were we doing leading up to the Great Depression? Sacrificing everything we could. Tin can drives. I wasn't around, I just read about them. I don't know if they still teach it to our kids. They need to. Tin can drives, no meat Tuesdays, all the things they had to support the boys overseas. Everything we had went to winning that war. So what happened when everyone came home? You had more mouths to feed. People couldn't sacrifice anymore. We sacrificed everything. Guess what's going on? Famine. Not enough jobs, not enough food to go around. That follows war. The place where the war happens is gonna be devastated, right? Fields will be set on fire, booby trapped with mines, whatever it may be, that land is gonna become desolated as well. So famine naturally follows war. This horse naturally follows the red horse. Again, you will work hard one day just to provide for your food for that day. How, how much of our budget, I'm not, not trying to expose anyone to how bad we are in debt. But if I work for a day, that's usually more than one day's food. Probably more than one week's food, if I'm honest. So think about that. Think about the, the total flipping of society. How would you make a house payment? I'm just saying, think about it. If all I'm doing is working for food, I'm not gonna have a house, probably. Excuse me. Oh, that went right through the microphone. Huh? You'll be a slave. Right? But it's okay, because you have a, you have a benevolent ruler who will provide everything you need, right? Let's look at the fourth seal, verses seven and eight of chapter six. When he opened the fourth seal, I heard the voice of the fourth living creature say, say, 'Come!' And I looked, and behold, a pale horse." Clint Eastwood, right there, right? Pale rider. "And its rider's name was Death." See, it's Clint Eastwood, right there. "And Hades followed him, and they were given authority over a fourth of the earth to kill with sword and with famine and with pestilence, and by wild beasts of the earth." The pale horse, pale referring actually to green. Talking about pestilence, everything is taken away. Death, it's the natural progression of war, of a lack of food, of people turning on each other. A fourth of the people, what's our world population? It's over four billion now, isn't it? Yeah. Seven point six billion. So think of that, almost two billion people are gonna die in this judgment. Two billion. Now, before you get thinking about that too much, think about what is it gonna do to everybody else? We had COVID deaths, and they couldn't handle those deaths that came on quickly in these big cities. People were just sitting in coolers and trucks outside, right? It's gonna be like, yeah. All that would never happen to America, you know? We'll see. Hopefully, I won't see, someone else will see. Quarter of the people die, over almost two billion people, dead during this judgment. Then we get to the fifth seal, this changes a little bit, we get away from horses, right? We've got through the war, through the leader of the war, through his lead general, how all this is gonna come out, and he sees something different in the fifth seal, verses nine through eleven. "When he opened the fifth seal, I saw under the altar," remember, we saw the altar in heaven, and God was on his throne, Jesus, and the Holy Spirit were before it. It says, "And the souls of those who had been slain for the word of God and for the witness they had borne." The souls that were slain. So if a rapture's already happened, and the church has been taken away, clearly, he's talking about different people than the church on these souls that are slain under the altar. Who do you think he's talking about? People that have accepted the Lord during the tribulation and have died. Okay? That, John has seen their souls under, excuse me, not their souls, he has seen them under the altar. Verse 10. "They cried out with a loud voice, 'O sovereign Lord, holy and true, how long before you will judge and avenge our blood on those who dwell on the earth?' Kinda sounds like David in the Psalms, how long are you gonna let these wicked people keep getting away with the nonsense they're getting away with, right? How far are you gonna let it go? Verse 11. "Then they each were given a white robe and told to rest a little longer, until the number of their fellow servants and their brothers should be complete, who were to be killed as they themselves had been." So in this fifth seal, you see the souls are under the altar, the martyrs during the tribulation. Now, they ask a question, how long are we gonna have to wait? And how did God respond? He gives them a white robe, okay? So who wears robes? Huh? Royalty, but who wears clothes? Casper doesn't need clothes, he's a ghost. So clearly, these people under the altar aren't just disembodied spirit, there's some sort of physical substance to our bodies in heaven. He's seeing this picture in heaven, right? I'm just saying, there's gotta be some sort of physical substance. Even though their bodies are still on earth, they've been slaughtered, they have been massacred, when they go to heaven, there is some sort of able, that they are able to wear clothes, be able to be seen. Now, I don't know if it talks about skinning, but it says you have to wear clothes still. All right? One size fits all. So, and this gives us a glimpse of what heaven is like, okay? Our spirits, our souls, whatever, are there, but there's some sort of physicality to it as well, okay? Even though the martyrs' bodies have not been risen, there is some sort of physicality to that. If that's what you wanna do, if you wanna be the heavenly seamstress, so on. I don't know. Maybe in heaven, they have those things they have on Star Trek, you know, those replicators, you just say what you want, they just... There it is. Yeah. Yeah, Earl Grey, thirteen degrees Celsius, or whatever he always said. There you go. Let's get to the sixth seal, we'll make it through the end of chapter six, which is where I wanted to end up. "When he opened the sixth seal, I looked, and behold, there was a great earthquake, and the sun and the moon became black as sackcloth, the full moon became like blood, and the stars of the sky fell to earth." Where did we hear that before? Where? I think it was Matthew. I know, I read so many verses to you. Jesus said, "Hey, this is what it's gonna look like." Sixth seal, this stuff happens. "The stars fall as a fig tree sheds its winter fruit, when shaken, the sky vanished like a scroll that is being rolled up, and every mountain and island was removed from its place." This is an earthquake. Everything is shaken, everything is dispersed. "Then the kings of the earth, and the great ones, and the generals, and the rich and the powerful, and everyone, slave and free, hid themselves in the caves and among the rocks of the mountains, calling to the mountains and the rocks, 'Fall on us, hide us from the face of him who is seated on the throne, and from the wrath of the Lamb, for the great day of the wrath has come, and who can stand?'" Now, if they've been deceived by the Antichrist this whole time, how come, all of a sudden, when this great event happens, do they know to run to the mountains and to know that the end's about to happen? Well, you've got the witnesses during the tribulation that speak, but I think you can only hide the truth for so long as well. I really think the Antichrist and his prophetess and all his entourage try to bring on the utopia as man sees it. I think they are gonna do their best, and as the earth literally will fall apart, as people rise up and say, "Your vision of perfection, isn't that, here comes another revolution, right? Here comes another war." What would darken the sky, and you wouldn't see any stars, and the sun would become red? Volcanoes? How about truly nuclear fallout? How about radiation poisoning, and how your skin's falling off, and your blood's just affected, and you're in pain all the time? How many people are gonna wanna die? It just gives us a picture, he's trying to tell us what he's seen, what we know of our bombs, and what would happen of our nuclear fallout, if it happens? Someone could get their finger on the button and push it, and all of a sudden, all the missiles are fired, and everything becomes desolate. Notice at the end, verse seven, at the last fear. Well, at the end there, verse fifteen and seventeen, fear now truly falls on everyone. I mean, we're seeing a little bit of fear right now with COVID, and everyone worried about what's gonna happen. Imagine when they truly fear for their lives, when there's no hope. End of verse six, who, I mean, end of chapter six, who can stand? Who can endure all this? Who's the one that's gonna be able to stand now and fight against Jesus when he shows back up? It'll be beyond their earthly powers, I believe. I believe clearly the spiritual element of Satan propping someone up at the end to be able to even try and stand up against Jesus, and for there to be a battle of Armageddon, is as much a spiritual power as it is a physical power, trying to go against Jesus. Now, as we get into chapter seven, he's gonna start describing some of the events of these seals, before he gets to the seventh seal, and the seventh seal actually is kind of a multifaceted one. If you wanna read ahead and get into it, feel free to read ahead, Leguera, and you can know it all before I ever talk about it.